Good evening, everyone. I am here in Lou of the mayor because she finally got to take her trip to Florida. So bless her. I hope she's having a great time. I know you all came tonight hoping to hear a lot of political talk. And you know, we were going to show you a lot of commercials and so on. We don't do that here. Okay? The only thing we're going to do is city business. So let's get started. How about what's the largest first groups?
I put the things to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with a religion and justice for all.
Aaron, when you took the gold.
Councilor Gray. Councilor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilor Dietrich.
Here.
Councilor Pointer.
Here.
Councilor Sherberg.
Okay, um, we need to approve the agenda if we can, Tim. Are there any changes?
I know changes.
Aaron, is there? I still approve. Need a second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay. Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And I also say yes. Okay, the next thing we have is public input. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period, which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak to the council to say something?
Jay Schmidt, seven fifty, Ridgewood Drive, Manchester. I'd like to talk about city debt. And our debt is ten million plus. Less than twenty years ago, we were two million. And I watch all meetings and I never see anybody come up with a plan to pay down city debt. The last time I spoke about city debt, you had a banker come in and talk the next meeting, try and tell me I was wrong. Well, I'll debate anybody on money. People don't run their household like this. They don't run a business like this. We've got businessmen on the council. And I'm telling you, I don't think one of them run their business like this. When you buy something, you pay it off. Now Dave Ramsey, I don't know if anybody heard of him here or not, but he's going to start a program for city to pay down debt. And me and my wife are going to pay for that program for our town. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the council? Let's move on then to the consent agenda. First thing that we have on the consent agenda is an approval of the minutes of the October fourteenth regular council meeting. The next is the resolution approving the bills. We need to acknowledge the receipt of city reports and minutes. We have reports from the airport, planning and zoning, park and rec. We have monthly revenue and expense reports for August and September. Uh, we have a resolution amending a salary, and this would be for Greg McLaughlin. He's a part-time garden and parks maintenance person, and he is going to be paid fifteen dollars per hour. Uh, three, six, we need to approve payment of a total of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty cents to Fairgram for engineering services, and these are for the twenty twenty-four street improvement project. This invoice was missed in some way. We don't know if it was a glitch in the computer or whatever. We apologize for that happening, Ryan, obviously. But it was not paid in July as we had hoped to, so we will be authorizing the payment tonight. Okay? Sorry if that happened to you. Um, three, seven is a resolution for disposal of equipment from the police department. And these are blocks that are going to be sold to seven officers. We're replacing them with newer ones. Okay, Chad, did you want to speak to this at all?
I really was pretty self-explanatory. Okay, that's fine.
And that is it on the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second.
Do you see those?
I don't know, did I? I will bet. That's why I have you here, Linda. My left-hand woman. Okay. Um, yes, thank you. Three point four is the liquor license application for the alley, which is the bowling alley. Thanks. I appreciate it. Okay. I need a motion and a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
And I need a second.
Sorry, bud.
Thank you. Okay, any thing that you would like to talk about?
Oh, I'll question. Um, the alley bowling, are you somebody else going to be running that?
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
I haven't over just purchased that.
Oh, yeah, the gentleman who runs the tree kind business, he's purchased that and will be taking over ownership, I think, once they get all the liquor licenses and all that transferred.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to see it's going to sell. Anything else? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, we have nothing that we have removed from the consent agenda. So the next thing we have is a public hearing. Uh, this is on ordinance fifteen, which is an ordinance amending the code of ordinances for Manchester by amending chapter one seventy for subdivision regulations. And I'm going to ask him to speak to this.
Yes, basically what we're trying to do is make it easy for property owners to adjacent parcels to combine them without having to resurvey it. And so we go here is just again smoothly a process of saving the property or some money. Uh, when they combine parcels under this, that allow that parcel to be counted as one lot per the zoning ordinance. And so the setback requirements are from the contiguous areas the outside instead of having that line that you have between the parcels. So again, we are just trying to make it easier for people to combine lots.
And then when they go to take it out, they have to then go through some.
So they'll have to re-subdivide it, correct?
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, we'd love to hear from you.
Do you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry, five oh five. If no one else wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing at five oh seven. And what we would like to do this time is in order to move this along, we would like to waive the first and second readings of this. So I will need a motion and a second to waive the first reading. I will need a motion and a second to waive the second reading. And then I'll need a motion and a second to proceed to the third and final reading. Okay?
So the reason we're wanting to expedite this is we do have a person that is interested in using this process. He's in the process of trying to build a garage, wants to work on it yet this year. We started this back in July. Finding the language and terminology we needed for the ordinance was important. There's still a part process. They still have to go through a public hearing with the city council. So that notice is a seven-day notice. Once the council adopts this, we'll send out the notice for the public hearing for the person that wants to combine their lots. So we, this process is drawn out for them, and they're losing valuable time. But same token, meaning there really is just to make it easier for people to combine lots.
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
I'll second that.
Okay.
We do first and second?
No, we have to do them separately.
Separately.
Separately? Okay, that's all I ask.
It's easier, almost like you could do.
Yeah, I worded it.
Was that person?
It requires a majority of the council approving, waiving of the reading, so that's why we need it in a separate way.
Okay, does anyone want to talk about it at all before we go on, or should we just go ahead and vote? We all get a vote? Okay, so Joe?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay. Would you like to waive the second reading? If so, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the second consideration.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, let's go ahead and vote. Then, you know, someone has to have something to say. Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, here we go. One more time. Proceed to the third and final.
I moved to waive the third reading.
Uh, you can't waive it.
No.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Time to approve the third reading.
I'll second it. Brian can have it.
Okay, Brian gets that one. Okay. Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay. We're done with public hearings. Okay, the next thing that we have are our regular agenda items. And our first one is that we are going to hear from Maggie Berger, who is our uh, spear financial advisor, and she has given us papers here.
Yep, your colorful reports. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Um, Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. What we've laid in front of you is the TIP and debt reports that we bring on an annual basis. Uh, this is getting you in preparation for the deadline on December first for filing your TIP certification. I remind you that we outline all of the general obligation debt of the city on pages on our red sections. Uh, the only newest debt that's out there was out there last year at this time as well. We have the twenty twenty-three A and the twenty twenty-three B debt. That is on page three of those red pages. We give you the total principal amount, total principal and interest of all of the debt outstanding. So total principal of the general obligation debt is six million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We pay some of this debt in that yellow column with TIP revenues. Those are identified right up front when we're talking about doing a bond issue, whether that is something that's generating economic development, whether it needs to go through the process of using TIP revenues, et cetera. And then on page four of the red pages, we talk about the other ways that we use to pay debt. So we're using some franchise fees, some water revenue, some sewer revenue, road use tax, and then also sewer revenue on the twenty twenty-three A, which had a sewer line extension in it. Uh, far right column is our total property taxes to be levied in fiscal year twenty-six is where we draw the arrow. Um, and that just kind of gives you the history down till twenty thirty-four of what still needs to be levied for um, by the city for this outstanding debt. We go on to our orange pages, and this is the revenue debt outstanding for the city. City of Manchester has a two thousand and eight sewer SRF loan and a two thousand and nineteen water SRF loan. Uh, this SRF means State Revolving Fund. That is a subsidized program that the city can use for uh, projects that qualify for DNR regulation. We'll say we'll, we'll call it that. It's not for growth or expansion. It's for replacement of existing, meeting any permit needs that the DNR is imposing upon the city. Um, those interest rates on those debts are two percent. Uh, they're both out there till twenty twenty-nine. Um, and the reason that there's nothing in the property tax column at the far right, you cannot pay this debt with property taxes. It does not count against your debt capacity because it is only a revenue debt that can only be paid with the sewer system revenues and the water system revenues. Um, total principal of that debt outstanding is about, it's two million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars between the two. And again, those pay off here in twenty twenty-eight and twenty twenty-nine. So we go on to our purple pages. Um, this is where we talk about TIP rebate obligations. I remind you a rebate agreement is you've entered into an agreement with a developer. That developer says, I will build something new that will add new valuation to your city. And if it sits in the urban renewal area, you will be able to rebate back a portion of those new taxes to that developer. It will always be a portion, even if you give them one hundred percent rebate, because they pay in at a tax rate. So the combined city county school tax rate, but they can only be rebated at a TIP tax rate. And that is always going to be slightly lower depending on debt circus levies, pebble of the school, school instructional, things like that. So the rebate agreements outstanding go on for a couple of three pages. Um, most of your rebate agreements are not paying back at one hundred percent. They're somewhere between fifty and eighty percent um, on an annual basis. And then at the far right column of page three, we talk about the annual appropriation amount of those rebates. So it starts out about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And again, with growth in some of these um, that are just coming on or their valuation will just come on, then we show that we've got um, growth in those rebates. Again, you have to remember that you're tying a rebate amount to when that growth is happening. So we can't rebate a developer until that growth happens and until they pay new taxes or or pay additional taxes um, in addition to what that lot value was to begin with.
And there is on the development agreements and not exceed amount.
Correct.
And there's also a time limit. So
Correct.
Once they reach that date, the development agreement ends, even if they haven't captured the full amount, that's all they capture.
Correct. And development agreements like this, the way that the city of Manchester is doing them, is definitely the safest way for you to be giving developers money. You don't, um, this way that they're doing something, they're performing before you perform, right? So they're providing you that increment. They're increasing your tax base. They're paying new taxes, and then you're rebating back a portion of those taxes. That's that incentive. So we think that's a safe way for the city to get involved um, with rebate agreements that way. We go on to the yellow pages, and this outlines the TIP revenue abatement. So this is where we said on that yellow column in the red pages, if you have general obligation debt and we've identified it upfront at the time that we're discussing with the council over the past few years, we're going to pay a portion or we're going to pay all of this with TIP receipts because it's attributable to a TIP project. It's attributable to something that's lending to economic development within our community. This is where we outline that portion of the debt that will be paid back with those TIP revenues. This goes on again and identified by bond issue at the top and how much of that original bond issue is to be paid back with TIP, the principal amount. Um, so we've got principal and interest here, and we transfer that in that next, and then kind of that center column, transfer that back to general obligation. So that is the amount that gets transferred in so that when Erin is making the debt payments on an annual basis, she's not only depending on all those other sources of revenue like um, local option sales tax and road use tax, she's also depending on these TIP revenues. We've got a forgivable loan um, at uh, two boulders, which is the cobblestone.
Um, just to go back on these yellow sheets on the total on there, ties back to your red sheet, the yellow column there. So red sheet, page three.
Yeah.
Like yellow column, the the totals on the yellow sheets tie back to that yellow column in the red sheets.
Yep, for what is attributable to general obligation debt.
Yep.
And then, yeah, then we've got the cobblestone unforgivable loan, and then we've got um, TIP increment rebate agreements. And again, the reason we do those purple is they tie back to the purple pages that you just looked at. So we can try to color coordinate it for everybody. It makes my life a little easier too. Um, so that ties back there. And then we again have drawn the line to fiscal year twenty-six. This is telling the city how much you need to certify at a minimum um, for your debt um, obligations that are coming up in fiscal year twenty-six. So by December first, you have to turn in things for fiscal year twenty-six.
And that is for.
Started.
That is for TIP.
Yeah, that is for TIP.
But we'll certify for TIP.
Correct. You've just started fiscal year twenty-five, and we're already certifying fiscal year twenty-six. The reason that this is required by December one is then that gives the county auditor's offices time to turn around, take off the TIP that you are needing so that they can turn around and give you a valuation to be able to prepare your budget. And they've got to provide that valuation number to you by January first per the code section. So we go on to our green pages and we talk about debt capacity. So I want you to look at column number two, if you would, and we'll read straight down column number two. We're looking at fiscal year twenty-five, the year that we are in, which is tied to your valuation as of January first of twenty twenty-three. The city's actual property valuation, reading straight down that column, is five hundred and three million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. I do want you to look now to one column to the left, to column number one. That is a significant increase. There's more than ninety million dollars of increase. If everyone remembers fifteen months ago, got a nice little letter from the county assessor that says, hey, you didn't do anything to your property, but your valuation is going up. That was statewide. That was not just you. Um, you, this is an increase of twenty-three percent. Statewide, we're seeing anything in these reports from fifteen to thirty-five percent. So you're falling right there in the center of that. Um, but that valuation increase, this is one hundred percent. So this does not have to do with rollback valuations. Doesn't have anything to do with residential or commercial rollback. This is one hundred percent. So we go back to column two. It generates for you twenty-five million dollars of debt capacity. Um, twenty-five million is a significant increase of just under five million dollar increase from the year before. And that's really what you see when you talk about debt capacity and that valuation growth. These total outstanding of general obligation bonds, principal amount is six million, three hundred and forty thousand. You're going to pay annual rebates back in fiscal year twenty-five of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, so we have to take that amount off. You're going to pay principal back of one million, two hundred and five thousand dollars of debt um, in fiscal year twenty-five. So at the end of the fiscal year, you will still have remaining twenty million, fifty-three thousand dollars of debt capacity or about six, seventy-nine point six one, so about eighty percent of your capacity will remain. Most of our cities um, say that they do not want to borrow more than eighty percent of their total debt capacity, leaving at least twenty percent there. So we always just put in that as a plug on the contingency. So if we remove that five million, you're still sitting at about fifteen million dollars of debt capacity. So it's a healthy number. That number has gotten healthier due to the increase in valuation. But it also is is healthy because you're paying back more than one million dollars of debt a year on that six point three that's outstanding. We have a two percent growth um, built in here because the city prior to um, that very large increase was growing at an average of three percent. So we've knocked that down to a two percent. We know that the one-one-twenty-four numbers were fairly flat, but the only growth was attributable to new structures, new houses, new businesses, and things like that. We anticipate at twenty-five, um, there might be a slight appreciation of natural growth, but again, probably more in line with just what is new um, to the tax rolls. Okay, and then we go on to our blue pages and we look at column number uh, two again, which is fiscal year twenty-five. What these blue pages represent is this is the amount of TIP availability, TIP growth within your community since the inception of your TIP districts. So you've had commercial growth of seventy-eight point seven million dollars. We've got industrial growth of fifteen million dollars. Remember again, these numbers are slightly higher than column number one because they all were revalued, residential, commercial, um, industrial. Uh, and then the biggest, next biggest one down there is residential property of a hundred and twenty-five million. I do want to point out that last year, you had a multi-residential rollback. As of fiscal year twenty-five, that multi-residential classification goes away and is actually included in the residential. So that's why that looks a little bit heftier uh, because you're taking all those apartments, anything that had a multi-residential classification, and you're adding it to that residential classification. So that leaves us about a hundred and forty-four million dollars of taxable valuation in the TIP district. We take that at thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents, which is the TIP tax rate for the city this year. And that generates about four point five five million dollars in TIP revenue. The city is using approximately three hundred and thirty-two thousand for debt, geo debt. You're using about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand in fiscal year twenty-five for rebate obligations. And then also you're using um, about eleven thousand, two hundred dollars for inner fund loans or incentives like forgivable loans. So you're not using about three point eight million dollars. Not using is not telling you to go Q cent. Every dollar that you use is going to damage not only your um, your general fund. If there's not been significant enough growth, um, you will see a reduction of your general fund by a third. Uh, this county by a third, school district by a third. So although, you know, you have significant unclaimed TIP dollars, you've had that kind of same average of unclaimed TIP dollars in the past. So we're not telling you to go out and claim anything new. Your 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 TIP obligations do go up in the future years in column three and in column four because your TIP rebate obligations go up. What is not shown is there, we don't know what the valuation increase is yet for those rebates. So we're showing those rebates outstanding, but we just haven't shown the new valuation because we don't have those numbers yet from the county assessor, and they will come um, as soon as the county assessor makes that assessment on January first or whatever year that new valuation will be here. So any questions? It's a whole lot of information.
Hey, just to repeat real quick. Um, how did you say that in the beginning? The water debt, uh, they say that by.
Yep, water and sewer debt.
Can only be paid, which is like sewer or or water power or whatever.
Correct.
Can only be paid with the revenue from Waterville or.
Correct. Correct. The the way that this debt has been issued is in a way that it was done as a revenue-based debt. So your resolutions on those debts from twenty oh eight and twenty nineteen state that it will only be paid with revenues of the system. The resolution also states that if the revenues of the system are not sufficient enough to make not only the operation and maintenance expense costs every year and the debt payment, you will raise rates. So there's not a whole lot of wiggle room in there. Um, just because this is revenue-based debt, it is debt that should be paid, in my opinion, should be paid by the revenues of the system. Um, we can operate a system that's not paying for itself, correct? Um, so with it being a revenue debt, it does not count against the city's debt capacity. So it doesn't show up on those green pages um, because it is a revenue-based debt. As cities look at large projects, we have some cities looking at ten, fifteen, twenty million dollar sewer and water projects, that question gets asked a lot. Well, we can't do that because we don't have the debt capacity. Again, most revenue debt should be issued as revenue debt, so it doesn't count against your debt capacity. So some cities will break out a small portion. I'm working with the city right now. It's a twenty million dollar debt. They're going to do two million in geo debt because they have the capacity to do it and use some local option sales tax to pay that portion, but the other eighteen million is going to count um, on the revenue side. So they will have to raise their rates too.
Well, I saw it too, you know, I think it's, uh, Eric feels, I think it was O-line has to fix their sewer system. I think that was going to be a twenty-two or twenty-five million dollar project, so.
That's, that's.
Ours is a good shit for a while, but.
Unfortunately, that that tends to be um, the price tag that we're seeing for cities, your size and types of systems that you're operating. Um, the SRF program is a twenty-year debt. Um, and your your revenue debt that you did in water, you did not want to take out over twenty years, which is great. You kept that much shorter. It was taken out in twenty nineteen. It's going to be paid off in twenty twenty-eight. It was a ten-year debt. Um, but you can go up to the twenty-year debt at the SRF subsidized interest rate, which is good. The reason that um, you don't go over the twenty years is because unfortunately, some of useful life of these large sewer and water projects without major improvements is twenty years. So we want that debt to be paid off as you're having to tackle um, other projects in the future. That timing all aligns.
Super. Thank you.
Yep.
Does the council have any other questions?
Thank you.
We have us all memorized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being up on your agenda. I'm headed out.
You know us very well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. Okay, uh, six point two, we have a resolution approving the installation of stop sign at Brinslow Drive and Crescent Drive. And this is the one where people came and spoke to us about asking for the three-way stop. So are we in agreement that we would like to do this? I need a motion and a second if so.
I'll make a motion.
Any comments before we vote?
Well, people wanted it, so we'll get it. I agree. I agree.
I was going to wait to make that comment until after we all voted yes on it, but yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully though, we all are still in agreement on that and you know, it's just nice to know that when they have a concern, even though it doesn't always meet the criteria to make it happen, we're still.
Yeah, we listen to the, yeah, listen to the people that live there, right?
So, Ben?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, the next thing that we have is ordinance sixteen, which is an ordinance amending the code of ordinances uh, for chapter forty-eight, which is on noise control. Tim, did you want to speak to this again?
Just basically stacked up the comments from the council. We implemented those uh, recommendations into the ordinance amendment.
Um, I think we got everything, but if there is something missing.
Then we're working on time, distance. If you guys want more time to look at it again, we can table it till the next week or two.
Or we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend chapter.
Correct. The first reading of this?
Yeah.
I'll start again.
Okay, any discussion before we vote?
Yeah, so with my concerns that I had with the noise and stuff and then whatnot, I've ever thinking about it for the last from two weeks since we've talked about it. Uh, I I fully trust that the Manchester Police Department is going to be able to handle this properly, and I think that we're going in the right direction here. A lot of it is up to the discretion of the police department, and I think they've done pretty well throughout all the years and all the other ones. A lot of it is up to the discretion of the police department, and I think they've done pretty well throughout all the years and all the other ones. So I just wanted to say one.
Oh, Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, number six point four, our ordinance seventeen, this is the ordinance amending code ordinances for chapter sixty-nine, this is parking regulations, and we had talked about this one at the list. And I believe, again.
Again, including the comments we've dealt with, whereas the time forty hours for trailers and then if it is over forty hours or they have to move back to at least fifty feet away.
So do we want?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of six point four.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, the next thing we have is to acknowledge the receipt of the City of Manchester Iowa Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we had a chance to look this over. I want anyone looking at it to remember this, this is not written in cement. This is a suggestion for us. We will be looking at these things as we go along. I spent some time with Doug talking about it and so on, I know that it's been some time to think. And I think it's a good start myself, but obviously, don't make the assumption that we're going to have all these things by next week because it's not going to happen, folks, but a lot of things to dream about it, so. So would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I think it, you know, looking through what I did and listening to the presentation, it's it's nice to get a bunch of wants down on paper and not only we can sit through it and see what makes sense. You know, I've spoken to quite a few people in contact through the, through my business and, you know, I really don't get a lot of comments about this should be, you know, once you go forward to this or, you know, people are pretty happy with our parks and trails and, and so this is a good starting point to get something down on paper. You know, it's always nice to have a want list and sit through what we really need.
Again, I think this just provides you with some answers to what we actually have in our parks. Not everybody realizes all the different parks, all the different facilities, the condition of them. Again, we start talking about playgrounds, but then we think that was new two years ago, it's been twenty. So at times those facets, there are maintenance costs, there are things we have to work on, but this gives us a planning document and guidelines to what do we need to look outward in the future.
I also found it interesting to look at the report, and I know it takes a while to write the report, but it's interesting to look at it and see how much we have moved towards things that were still pie in the sky, so to speak, when it was originally, you know, started. So it's good to see that we're moving ahead, I think.
And as far as like the parks go, I was, it's kind of interesting. You don't think about it being ADA compliant, you know. I'm still pretty well healthy, and you don't think about people that, you know, that might be in wheelchair, might need to use the bathroom at the park, you don't think about the fact that that doorway is not open wide enough. You know, so just little stuff like that that I didn't even realize prior to being on the council of some of the problems that we had in some of the parks, and I've been hearing this my whole life. So it's, it's nice to see it. I'd make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the plan.
Anyone like to make a second, else I have a. Any other discussion? Linda, I know you did some touring with Doug.
Doug was very informative, had a lot of ideas and stuff to think about, so.
He was a good source. Yeah, he told me that you were playing with things, so.
Very good source.
Good bet, good. Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add? You're the only one that hasn't said anything.
I thought it was. Well, I, I think you guys did a great job. You're right, I just look, it's time that some of the parks, I've had people comment about bomb parks, really looking forward to hopefully even get a shelter up out there. A couple of people made comments about new bathrooms at at Seabird Park, but, you know, it's just a. Yeah, I think it's a great deal, so a way to keep moving forward.
Okay. Joe?
Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay. The next thing we have is a resolution accepting the twenty twenty-four Grand Avenue Extension Project. Do we need to discuss this at all? Or Jason, did you want to say anything about it? Just yay or?
It's it's complete, the recommendation letter in there significantly under the estimate, the time of planning. Still under what the what the bill was, we're closing that. That's just essentially the city accept ownership of the project and then it starts the two-year maintenance bond. So there's still something where, you know, up here, of course, next couple of years, you still do have the maintenance bond on the project maintenance.
So I need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll say it. I'm going to give it to Linda because always goes to the lady.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to all you guys that had a hand in that project, it looks great, you know.
Okay, this is the part you won't want to do, now we have to actually pay for it. This is the final bill in the amount of eighty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-six cents to Pierce Tobin for the twenty twenty-four Grand Avenue Extension Project. And I need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to pay the bill.
Any of a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Because this is the final read, and it should release thirty days after council has accepted it, which is.
So then this will be the last time we see Green that bill come for this this particular project.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, Tim, would you speak to us about the Flood Coalition Community Outreach Planning Meeting, please?
We will be hosting a community outreach planning meeting on Wednesday, November thirteenth at six o'clock at the community center. At the fairgrounds, we will have the Iowa Flood Coalition, the Iowa Flood Center, ECIA and the City of Manchester represented at that meeting. We're going to talk about the different projects we are working on right now. DNR is starting to work on a flood study on the eastern quarter. The east three tributaries going even the Coca River. One of the challenges we're looking at is because of the changes in the flood plain elevations in two thousand and sixteen when they did a reevaluation, two hundred and thirty-four parcels were included into the flood plain with additional twenty-four parcels or two dozen into the floodway. Wanted to look at ways in which we can maybe reduce that flood, that base flood elevation. If there are some projects we can do, whether it's potential retention basins, opening up some drainage ways in order for us to reduce that flood plain so we can get some of the properties out of there because these are going to be affordable houses. These are lower homes in town. We can't replace those houses today at those costs. So we want to sit there and save what we can. So there are some challenges we're going to look at. We will be setting out a salary survey to residents of the community. We have to complete a salary survey to see what our mode of modern income ratio is in town. These will be anonymous, the letters will, they fill out the survey, it's a range, you know, how many people are in the household and what's your average income between these ranges. And it's anonymous, but this way it allows us to go back and show the feds that we've done our work. We are serving this number of people that are income impacted. And so that way we can get more grants and apply for more funding that way. So there's a lot of stuff that'll be coming up. This this really is just a kickoff event, and we started this pilot program with the Iowa Flood Coalition, and we're starting to get more interest coming from DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers. So this really is just that kickoff meeting, and everybody's invited to attend.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have resolution thirteen, which is a resolution approving the assignment of airport hangar number two lease. Tim or Jim or anybody want to speak to it?
Well, we we talked about this initially, it was an assignment that we were presented from Ultralight LLC to James Hill. Since then, we decided, Mr. Hill decided, Mr. Georgian, to transfer the the hangar to Mr. Georgian. Same terms that you're getting here on this, this is the same terms that were in effect when Ultralight LLC had it and when Jim Hill had it. The only thing we've done is we've updated some of the language to confirm with the other leases that we use. The the length of the lease is the same and the the rent is the same. Just transferring it over.
Okay. I move to approve. And I need a second, please. I'll start it though. Any discussion? Okay, Linda? Yes, Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
And I also vote yes, so it's yes. Okay, that's the end of our, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't have a problem with changing the lease. I have a problem with the not updating the terms and the price on it, so that's why, that's why I say no, I think.
Okay. Thank you, too.
Never should have. My brother.
Engineer? Ryan, I'll go first.
Quick update on Eastman, I guess we did start looking at assessments going into final point, was every confirmed you guys' direction prior to the, we should have those numbers to air and review. Step through the process if that comes to you guys, but if you want to review before close out. We should be in position to get both our paperwork coming in December there, so. They're giving us a scheduler, put quite a bit of effort, you know, to review the documents and stuff, so. On a pretty good track. Now, that is a project that won't count to your maintenance bond once you accept it, so it's another reason to confirm with staff, want to make sure everything is good to accept when you actually take that action.
Thank you.
That's all it.
Jason?
The only act that we have going right now is Commerce Court out by, or Potabom across the street from kind of Kitty Corner to Bart, and out there, looking about two more days of concrete pours for that to be complete. So right now we're working on two half, two remaining halves of the main line going in right at the apron, right off of Burnington Road, plus a couple of additional pours in the cul-de-sac itself. Being a cul-de-sac is kind of a Tetris, you know, puzzle of how you make the pours go together over there and making sure we have maturity before we get the concrete truck down there to get it, get it complete. And we also have the apron, which will be in the location of, yeah, it's a lot that was in the subdivision for a future right-of-way, just south of the railroad tracks on the west side of Burnington Road, kind of across the street from that Northern Natural Gas Substation. They're working on getting that cut out from today, that'll be the field access for that remaining lot that MEI is not looking at potentially transferring title to. So expect by the end of the week, weather dependent on Wednesday, we're trying to get a bunch of stuff crashed in. It looks like they moved up the rain forecast from the evening till maybe during the day on Wednesday. So depending, hopefully today goes well, depending on the timing of the rain on Wednesday, it might be Thursday morning, we're going to get things wrapped up. They have them backfilling, but as they go, they've got rock in, backside of our Potabom's aprons, we did four concrete aprons for two accesses to the seed dealer there just to kind of prevent gravel from getting pulled up on the street on a regular basis, so. That's where that one's at right now. And I did get access last week to the grant software to get the notice of interest for the for the janitors, for those hazard investigation grants. That was a little bit of a, you know, kind of getting some permissions worked out because everything has to be done online with that, so.
Joe?
I have nothing to say.
Yeah.
Auditors are here today, have been here all day, and then we'll be here tomorrow working through the audit, so. Appreciate all the work they're doing.
Tim?
Just a reminder that we do have our next committee, our whole meeting on November fourth. Our, what we'll be going through is our capital improvement plan, part of that as we get ready to get into the budget season. And then the regular city council meeting that would have been on November eleventh is moved to November twelve because of veterans there.
Okay. Brian?
I had a comment about Jim Hill. I would hope that other people that were thinking about coming to our airport don't get a bad taste or not because of what happened to him, because I don't know if there's some kind of an alter motive that Pat Schmitz had assigned the ultralight thing to him. But, and there's a lot of questions, I think that should be looked into.
If I can, I'm sorry, you brought up, you reminded me with your comment on the airport.
Yeah.
Pat Schmitz and Jim Fisher are out there at the airport right now talking to a bunch of Boy Scouts. And so they're doing the airport tour with the Boy Scouts, and then there's discussion with them that they are looking to start a scholarship, so the people there can start as a student pilot. And so what would entail of them to take an hour-long flight, then you fence of courses, and then get their student pilot's license. So there is some interest from Boy Scouts out there, I I missed that. Thank you for reminding me of your.
Is, just a quick question, is there any, is there going to have to be anything? It's like, is that training or whatever, like lease-wise, is there anything we need to shore up so we can allow that to happen?
They are working with the instructor out of Independence right now that would be handling that for the test flights and stuff like that. And again, it's a one-hour flight and some coursework for them to do, but it's a great opportunity for these kids to get exposure to flying airports and aircraft.
Is there any, now that Mr. Hill is going to move Georgian's aircraft over to his hangar, Georgian's hangar will be open. Is there, I think we've talked about, there are people that are interested in coming to Manchester? Do we have a list of these people and?
There is a list of names that are out there, and we will be approaching them once we figure out what's going on with Georgian's hangar. Because again, that still belongs to Mr. Georgian if he wants to sublease that, because it's a T-hanger. That's the only thing, there's only one plane that else will fit in there. In in that T-hanger, yeah, and so that one would be one where we would typically allow it and sublet without the owner having a plane in there. But they have to actually work to get a plane in there and be based there. Otherwise, you know, George will have the option, he could turn down or he could donate it to the the city, and the city could then find a way to lease it out to somebody until it's time for us to turn it out because we've got new hangars built and we're ready to move on with some other project here. And get that displacement threshold removed.
Now, Georgian's gone over to Jim Hill's, and then Jim Hill's two renters left. So are we down now to four planes?
No.
Or five planes?
No.
Or Niveus?
We have seven out there.
We have seven planes.
Yeah, there's four of them in the, with the aerial spray. He's got four planes based there, Patchment's has a plane, Jim Fisher has a plane, John Georgian has a plane, so those are the seven. And we are working to attract more, if we can get one into that T-hanger, that gives us eight, we give John, so another one, some space in his hangar, then that would help us get back closer to ten in a quicker fashion.
Because with the Niveus, we have to have ten, right?
Yeah, we have to have ten, we're actively working towards it. And, you know, we we reached ten threshold, they won't just catch us out because we we dropped down to nine. But if we aren't working to move, at some point budgets get squeezed and they'll reduce us, so. We've got a couple, we've got a year or two, which we work towards that, again, the FAA understands this stuff.
No. Yeah.
Monday, meeting of the whole, I will try to be here, but I have a son getting married this weekend, and my wife tells me I need to do gifts or something Monday, so I'm not sure. I used to have to pay for it, that's all. So.
Well, we are working with the capital improvement plan, so perhaps. I'm kidding.
No, I'm kidding too.
Okay, we know that.
No, nothing.
Okay. Okay, the thing that I wanted to do was to remind everyone that Halloween is Thursday night. Um, city Halloween runs from five until seven. Our police department will be out in force, there's no doubt in my mind. I sit on my front porch and watch them go up and down the street, it's kind of fun. I count to see how many times they go by my house. Um, but please, everyone drive carefully. Um, remember that these little ones are excited, they run out into streets. They all have masks on and they can't see very well, so you have to make sure that you can see them, so please keep our kids safe, okay? Anything else for the good of the cause? Okay, I will take a motion for a. And a little second, and Yarje, thank you very much.